All right, it's six forty-five. I'm gonna call the regular joint meeting of the city council on board to finance the order. We'll start with the pledge. Alrighty, we will, we have folk warm, who's on Zoom? We got.
Mike Maserelli's here, can you hear me?
And we can hear you, so that's a good test. The approval of the meeting minutes, can you still hear me, Mike?
I can.
We're good, all right. The meeting minutes were from August twelfth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Changes, additions, or corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That motion carries. The consent agenda is A, I'll put my glasses on for this, K. Does anybody wish to withdraw anything from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. We'll go to number four, which is to close out a fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. And I'll entertain a motion to approve the transfers totaling two million, four hundred seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred four dollars within the general fund to close out fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five.
Second.
Questions, comments on this one? We're finally putting it to bed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Number five is general fund carryovers. To approve carryovers from fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five to fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, totaling eight hundred eleven thousand, six hundred seventy-four dollars within the general fund.
Move approval.
Second.
Questions or comments here? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Number six is the community development block grant, uh, block grant fund carryovers. And we're gonna entertain a motion to approve carryovers from twenty-four, twenty-five to fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, totaling nine thousand nineteen dollars within the CDBG fund.
Move approval. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. All right, Board of Education. I need a motion to make an additional appropriation totaling five million, eight hundred thirty thousand dollars within the general fund for the Board of Education as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
I know, I didn't think anybody wanted to second that one, but we had to, thank you very much. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That motion carries. Number eight is a motion to transfer thirty-nine thousand, three hundred sixty-five dollars within the equipment building sinking fund as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, to purchase equipment for the fire department.
Move approval.
Second.
Questions or comments on this? This is for bunker gear. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? He's learning quickly. We're gonna appoint him to the Board of Finance. All right, um, the equipment, we did that one. Uh, there's another equipment building sinking fund. Uh, motion to transfer four hundred ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred seventy dollars within the general fund and make an additional appropriation totaling one million, one hundred eighty-two thousand, one hundred thirty dollars within the equipment building sinking fund as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Uh, in the Parks Department, we need to make a motion to transfer sixty-five thousand dollars within the equipment building sinking fund as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, to purchase equipment for the Parks Department.
Move approval.
We fought on that one. We're gonna give it to Rosengren, I heard in the last. Who's got a second?
Jacky.
Dick out. All those in favor?
For Jackie.
Jackie, you'll get in the minutes in the next meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. All right, uh, last one here is to make a Board of Education transfer of a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars from the general fund contingency account to purchase dark trace for the BOE.
Move approval.
There you go, Jackie. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. All right, for those in the audience, this is all perfunctory stuff, it's gone through the Board of Finance, many boards and committees. That's why we go through it quickly. Um, we will probably go through our monthly reports relatively quickly this time too, right Diane? Because we're, we're done with the year-end stuff from last year and only a couple months into this year.
Only two, actually. Um, so you did, everything that you did tonight really is closing out the fiscal year from last, everything that I reported last month. Um, so thank you. Uh, the auditors are here, they were here about a month ago. Um, they did their preliminary work, they'll be back again the end of October, beginning of November. Um, and as I did report, we're hoping to have an audit issued by December fifteenth. So we're hoping that we can stick with that schedule because it was very nice last year to have it done in mid-December. Um, but to get to where we are as far as the first couple of months, um, you have the report in front of you, really not too much to report at this point. I think the important thing is just to monitor the tax revenues right now. And they actually are coming in very consistent as they had been in prior years. Um, the Tax Office did send me updated numbers as of today. And really, um, real estate, personal property, and the motor vehicle regular on the pie chart that you have there uh, went up slightly in every area. So, um, again, very much in line with where we have been in the past um, with regard to tax revenues. Building permit revenue is slightly behind where we were at this point last year, we're at thirteen point one percent. We collected two hundred and thirty-five thousand, last year it was four thirty-two, so a bit behind there. And then the conveyance taxes, you can see, um, also at thirteen percent of budget. And, um, we did increase the conveyance tax revenue, uh, this year. So when you look at it, it's really not apples and apples when you compare those percentages, uh, to this time last year. Um, I do want to report investment earnings, we're not yet posted to the report that you saw. Um, we're still closing everything out, so some of those things are lagged. Um, so I did report that investment income collected through July was a hundred and fifty-three thousand. Um, last year at this, at that time, it was a hundred and seventy-eight thousand. Again, I do want to point out, we did increase investment income this current year's budget, um, from one point one million to two point two five. We don't know what's going to happen with interest rates, so we'll monitor that as we go along. There is talk to decrease the rates over the next month, so, um, we'll keep that in mind. On a positive note, that could help us on the other end, uh, because the other thing that I did want to report, we will be issuing, we actually have thirty-five million dollars in short-term notes that come due in October. Um, so we'd need to renew those notes. We're not ready to issue and permanently finance them yet for a couple of reasons. One, projects are still in progress. And two, when I did my CIP projections, I'm looking at where we can afford to um, start absorbing that, uh, principal payment. So we will be rolling those notes over, uh, this November, October, November. Thirty-five million is outstanding. Um, I know in my report here, I said we were going to issue about another thirty to thirty-five million on top of that. Um, I've been going through some of the cash flow this week, and it looks like it will be more in the range of seventy-eight to eighty million dollars. Now, that being said, um, interest rates have come down from what I had projected when I did the projections. So I think we will still be able to stay in line with the invest, interest income, I'm sorry, interest expense when we have to pay that off in fiscal twenty-seven. So I'm trying to be mindful of what we're in, what was in those projections that I did, um, to finalize the actual, um, uh, note amount. Just to give you a quick idea of what we're financing, um, forty million dollars for the Northeast Middle School, eight point three for Green Hills, ten million for Page Park, seven and a half million for the fire station. And this is one thing that's kind of, um, on the fence, like two and a half million for the senior center, depending on what those bids come in at, what the cash flow was projected for those. So those are just some of the larger projects that will be financed with the thirty-five million dollars. Um, and I believe we have the rating review scheduled for October second. So that's the next thing coming up.
Right, so nothing or shatteringly new there? Is there any other business to come before us? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
That, uh, there we go. I had to hear the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you. All right, the regular council meeting will start right at, right on time at seven PM. All right, it's seven oh-two, so we are gonna call the regular city council meeting to order. Uh, as you're coming in, if you're standing, I'm gonna ask you to stay standing because we're gonna start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Alrighty, we have kind of a busy, um, opening ceremonies tonight with a bunch of things to tackle. So the first one that I want to tackle is our Bristol Girl Softball Team. We've already recognized one of these teams, and I believe this is the junior team, correct? No, this is the senior team. The eleven, U eleven, which will, I'll call the junior team because we already did the older team. Uh, you have to remind me, by the way, they, they won the states, which is why they're here. How did they do in the regional here? That's what I thought, so congratulations. So what we're gonna do with the girls, and this is what we did with the other girls as well, we'll ask them all to come up. I, I don't have time to announce them individually, uh, but when they went out, uh, to their regional, we gave them all heart pins that they were able to share. Hopefully you guys got those. I know the senior team was too. Tonight, I'm gonna give them all a Bristol, the City of Bristol logo pin because you represented Bristol so well. And I'm hopeful that that continues, and we want to see you guys in the World Series next year, right? So come on up, we'll take a picture.
Did you finish playing, buddy? All the way right through into August, right? Are there any that aren't here by pants here? Look out for everybody. Hey, look somebody here, everybody. Gotta give your cookies. Everybody asked one? Everybody made it tonight. Awesome. Congratulations, ladies. Good job.
And sitting right in front of Ryan is DJ Green. So DJ Green is twenty-six years old, he also grew up in Bristol. He's participated in Unified Sports, Soccer, Track, and Basketball. He participated in the Ed Beardsley Challenger Program with basketball and baseball. He's been involved in Special Olympics in twenty-seventeen doing track, cross-country, and bowling. He, uh, currently works at Imagine Nation Preschool. His favorite things to do in his free time is running, hanging out with friends and family, going to his sister's softball games, and watching basketball and football. His favorite basketball team is the Celtics, I agree with him on that one. I also love to watch wrestling, WWE, every Monday and Friday. I love to draw in color, and he's excited to represent Bristol in the Minnesota Games as well. I will also mention that, uh, I've been fortunate enough to run the torch relay with our police officers for four years here in the city of Bristol, and DJ has run every single one of them. So thank you for carrying the torch and being who you are. I'm gonna ask you both to come up, we'll give you all a heart pin. But we have one more, but I did not see him come in, it's Jacoby Frye here. Oh, there he is, I didn't see him come in. So let me introduce, uh, Jacoby quickly, but I did ask him to come up and, uh, give a representation of what Jacoby has been through. So, uh, many of us in the room might know what Boys Nation or Girls Nation is. And, uh, through a high school program, each school typically sends one or two, uh, students to the mock government program in the state. Uh, we've sent a lot of people in the state, but I'm not aware of anybody from the city of Bristol, and Jacoby can correct me on this one, that when they went there became the governor of the state of Connecticut through Boys State. So Jacoby, uh, I, I may be also the only one, and he'll correct me on this if I'm, if I have this mistaken, uh, was, I think, the only one from Connecticut who's gone to Boys Nation as well. So he's gonna come tell us a little bit about his experience, and Jacoby, the floor is yours. Make sure that green light is on. Green light's on there? There you go.
I do want to say that my experience at Connecticut Boys State was one of the greatest peaks of my life, as well as the fact that when I went there, my day was to be myself, right? I didn't intend to run for anything huge. I didn't decide to run for mayor. I lost the mayoral election on day two of Boys State. And I was able to be the first Bristol Central Governor in American state history. Action early, and it's not that they didn't like me, but my likability was snarky. Seattle, Florida, California, you name it, I met kids from all around the country. And the good thing about Boys Nation is, you travel the country, you get someone you know. Two kids I know from Missouri, two kids I know from, two kids I know from Northern South Dakota. That might be the special thing.
Thank you, Jacoby, and, um, we, we don't give out many what I call keys to the city, but I also had to be a little, little different here tonight because we, we, uh, recognize so many people. But I have a key to the city of Bristol for you because you represented Bristol so well. Not just on that state level, but just even getting to Boys Nation is definitely a huge accomplishment. So congratulations to you, let me come hand it to you. Yeah, I know. And he lost for mayor, and then won the governor. So yes, that's perseverance right there. Um, so that's amazing that we have three of those huge special awards all in one night. So I appreciate all of you, uh, for your patience on that. We're gonna start our public participation session in just a second, but I know most of you probably have schoolwork to do, and you don't want to stay here all night. So if you did want to exit, this might be a good time to go ahead and do that. And the coaches are shaking their head back there. So we'll, we'll give you a minute to do that. And for those that are staying, our, our first public participation, and this is for the council that's important, will be from the Connecticut DOT. Uh, they are gonna give us a quick update on where we are with the Route seventy-two alignment going through Bracket Park. So they're gonna be up first, and then we'll do regular public participation. All right, Ray, so I'll let you go ahead and do the introduction of our friends from, uh, the Connecticut Department of Transportation. I know, Ray, we've been working many years on Route seventy-two, and, uh, the next iteration is coming, but I'll let you go ahead and introduce.
Thank you, Mayor. And, you know, with me tonight is Andrew Craig from the DOT. He's gonna do a presentation on the realignment of seventy-two through, uh, Bristol's downtown area. So currently, as you, as everybody knows, you enter, you know, Bristol coming, you know, west into the city. Then, uh, you'll take a left onto the, you know, Main Street, and, you know, Route seventy-two, you know, goes around. This project will have Route seventy-two continue on, so the current local portion of Riverside Avenue, uh, will, you know, become Route seventy-two. And then the seventy-two would, uh, go through Bracket Park on the northern, you know, side. And currently where School Street is will be reconfigured to, to, uh, in effect somewhat, you know, re-figure, you know, Bracket Park. Um, the DOT is currently in the, you know, concept phase of design, looking, is important. And, you know, this is part of the, you know, public outreach information, you know, program. Certainly, it's a big project. There'll be, you know, subsequent meetings and a, uh, and once again, from public works perspective and the city's perspective, we're really looking for the comment, and this is an opportunity to present directly to the council, so, you know.
Thank you, Ray.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Andrew Crea, project manager with the Project Development Unit, uh, from the Division of Highway Design, uh, CTDOT. Um, so today, I'm bringing you pretty much an update of proposed project zero-one-seven-zero-zero-one-one, which is the realignment of Route seventy-three, seventy-two through Bracket Park. Um, a little over a year ago, we had a similar update as well. Um, we were kind of rescoping and re-kicking off the project itself after it was a little dormant for a little while. Um, so with that, we've had a lot of internal review, a lot of internal coordination among a lot of different policy updates that occurred within the past two years. Uh, that's including our intersection control evaluation policy as well as our complete streets policy. Can you go to the next slide? So to kind of give a, um, an overview of the area that we're talking about, oops, sorry. So, um, Route seventy-two, as it sits right now, kind of running past Riverside, kind of has a weird, um, jog. Um, recently, we just completed the project seventeen-one-eighty-seven to the west, and that was the realignment of that intersection itself. Uh, and the city has been taking part, um, pretty much a complete streets and a streetscape project kind of heading to the east. So this is kind of a, I don't want to say it's a linchpin, but it's definitely a phase that we need to accomplish to kind of get, um, traffic and pedestrian movement through the actual downtown area of Bristol. Go to the next slide. So through our analysis, uh, these alternatives that we're gonna be presenting today are very similar to the ones we presented a little over a year ago. Um, but what happens is, even though they might look the same, there's a lot of tweaks and a lot of background information that went in with us. We had to do a lot of coordination with our rights-of-way group, our environmental protection group, as well as our structures unit. Um, so this is, uh, alternative A. It's a straight-lined intersection, pretty much going from the eastern side of the project limits all the way up to the completed project on the western side. Um, this will be able to have all complete street connections, bicycle facilities, as well as sidewalks. Um, and the arrangement, the lane arrangement here, uh, provides a decent level of service for the intersection and improves traffic movement through the area itself. Uh, the one downside to this is that even though it does do a straight-line, uh, alignment, it does cut a larger chunk of Bracket Park, which will make mitigation of the park itself a little on the difficult side. So that's why we're gonna be recommending to move forward with initiation for an actual design project with alternative B. Next slide. Now, alternative B shows the same lane arrangement, bicycle facilities, as well as sidewalks, but the main difference is its curved linear approach. What this does is, uh, leaves a larger area of Bracket Park intact itself and also avoids some, um, rights-of-way impacts to adjacent buildings as well. Um, also with this geometry coming through here, it adds a little speed calming in a physical sense. So that way, people coming through those intersections kind of don't have almost a drag strip look. So we're gonna be moving this forward, and that's pretty much where this, um, this little presentation is. We're moving to the next phase. So this is pretty much a, an example of a project timeline. Uh, we're in the green square with concept development. And what we're doing right now is we're wrapping up our concept development stage. We've done our alternatives analysis, we've done internal coordination as well as external coordination with the city as well and stakeholders as necessary. So we're looking to initiate this into a design project. Uh, we've been working with a design team to get that off and running. Uh, what that means is we're looking at probably a two-to-three-year duration within the design itself. This one's probably gonna be a little more than three years because of all the environmental permitting that has to go on because we are affecting the park. But once that's done, we're looking at a one-to-two-year construction period after that. It might end up being two years for construction, but a lot of that construction itself is gonna be taking place offline. But it's not gonna be affecting the roads as much as other projects. And then overall, we're looking at, um, costs to the state itself. So for this project itself, it's probably gonna end up being around, uh, a little over nine million dollars. Now, that's gonna be coming from state and federal funding, uh, no cost to the city. Uh, so most of it ends up being a lot of the construction because we are realigning a lot of the roadways, and it's a new road construction as well. We also have a rights-of-way impact that we have to consider for cost as well as our preliminary and final design. So pretty much at the end of this, we're looking to initiate this as a project moving forward. And for right now, we want to present this in a public setting so that way we can have questions, uh, field any concerns, comments. And, um, yeah, so if anybody has any questions, I'll be here to answer any of them.
You're good. We'll, we'll take that from the council right now. If we have any questions from the council, I'll open the floor.
You know, I attended one of your previous meetings and this discussion, and I think you've done a great job listening to those that are involved in this. Just for an interest, you might want to talk about that off area that affects the parish because some people might have a concern about that. So that was on part B. And that might be of interest to the public. And that might be of interest to the public.
Yep. So with the parish, we've actually had conversations with them previously, and we want to still offer them access to the front of the building as well, for any processions that they want to accomplish that. With School Street kind of being cut off, at this point, we don't know what that's going to look like in a future design, but we've we've incorporated driveways for both of these alternatives and for the other alternatives we actually analyze. So moving forward, that's going to be part of our handoff to the design team. That is a big note that's there, along with the park mitigation itself. So they have the contact of the parish so they can continue the coordination from there.
Thank you.
And this alternative B takes away the need to take some of those properties that are over on West Street, which were part of some of the original discussions. So I just wanted to mention that as well. I know there are some business owners over there and you know, the rental properties that are there. So people were concerned about that.
Yep. We try to limit the impacts as much as we possibly could.
Through the chair, does this skirt around the park entirely or does it cut into the park there? How much area are we talking about?
As it's looking right now, it's probably, I forgot the exact number itself, but this is the least impactful as a, as a parcel. So it's going to be running along that tree line, which is kind of where the river runs underneath where there's a culvert and it kind of runs along the property line. That way the parcel itself is a larger chunk versus having kind of little small park parks.
Through the park is going to just kind of move south, basically, right?
Yeah. And, you know, the design team will work with, you know, the city to move that forward as well as our own environmental and landscape design unit to kind of figure out how that ends up looking.
It looks like where it's going through now is where the basketball court is.
Yep.
Will there be a replacement of that basketball court? Because I know it's used by the Bristol Boys and Girls Club, also youth and community services here in town.
Yeah, I mean, I don't see why not. You know, we're still at the concept level at this one, so we look at that as almost the design level landscape feature. So that's definitely something that
I just want to keep that in mind because it is used. Thank you.
No problem.
Other comments or questions?
Through the chair, thank you. Is there any business or private property owner that will be more impacted with Plan B? That we're not seeing on this?
No, Plan B tried to stay on, let's say, non-residential property as much as possible. So it stayed within the park and the footprint of the park itself. I know there will be some sliver takes here and there, especially with that building right next to the the actual entrance to the, I believe it's the condos back there.
The tailor shop right there. Might be impacted.
It might be impacted, but as it is right now, we're kind of running, you know, we don't have survey for the area. We don't know the exact lines. Now, these can shift, you know, a couple of feet here, there, you know. Right now, we just wanted to make sure the actual footprint of the intersection itself works. And this option does.
Yeah. So are you leaning towards the alternative B versus having it just go straight?
Yes, this is what we're handing off to the design team.
Because there would be more impact on buildings if you were to go straight?
Yeah, if you go straight, you end up having to take all the buildings on that corner of Bracket Park where dentures the driveway. Plus with that, if you did a straight line alignment, it also kind of removes a lot of work that was just completed the other project to the adjacent intersection. So this one kind of ties a lot better into that. So we're not doing a lot of redundant work.
I think for me, the most impactful, important part of that too is the traffic calming idea or thought. People don't think this plays much of a role, but just having even a little bit of a curve and moving people around is very important long term. In a city that is becoming a walkable vibrant, you know, downtown, there's going to be a bikeway, bike path that comes through here. And, you know, many businesses picking up in and along North Main Street in particular.
One other quick question. I know NVCOG is doing the thing along the river. Will this tie in with that as well?
Yes. Yeah. So they'll have to work together. That plan right now comes along through the bottom half of Bracket Park.
Right.
So, but the biggest intersection that's going to be very difficult is the 7269 intersection. It's already been redone by the state.
And correct me if I'm wrong, there's no curb cuts on that new section at all. There's no businesses that will, you know, there, there isn't anything there. So it should make it, you know, flow even better.
Yeah, it's going to be one consistent sidewalk, pretty much, or
and street roadway. Yep.
And just to repeat, no cost to the city.
All federal and state funding.
Federal and state funding.
All right. Thank you, Andrew. Appreciate you coming, and that's why we put you up front. Appreciate that, Ray. We have one backtrack thing to do before we get to regular public participation, and that's the approval of the minutes from August 12th, 2025. Can I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any comments or questions from anybody on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. All right. And we will move on to Alex and Mike Arasenko first on the public participation list. You ready, Alex?
Before I begin, under the Americans with Disabilities, I will be formally requesting the extension of two extra minutes. Testifying before Congress, they were afforded two
Granted, not a problem. Alex, how do you like school?
Alex, who's on your shirt? Who is that? Is that Super Mario?
Alex, do you have anything that you'd like to say to us?
So with him, you're wanting some of his time to me? Clearly, you see a difference.
Abilities are different for all children. Yes, this is why we have special education programs for kids.
I completely agree. So the reason why, why you have a conversation without, and I'm not talking about Eric and Cheryl when I say your party, because they've been behind him through everything. Is that I want want people to see him. I want him This isn't a child who lacks, has your party killed him and said, what a meeting. For correcting her when she made that very Clearly, looking at a child with special needs and a severe There, there's a second. Again, I was part of your party who think that I'm some, I'm some madman. I just do stuff like this. I just, I find it sad and I find it very pathetic. And a veteran, I So outspoken about Prevent people from your party calling the local police on me. Really, now that I'm thinking of it. Because it got back to me that someone in the RTC was considering calling the police on me, which would be the fourth time All because I don't pay for them. Best for him and some people don't like what I got to say. I mean, come on, guys, look at him. How many five-year-olds, six-year-olds do you know that are at this point? That know what the future holds for Alex? It breaks me. It really does. I hope you understand why I wanted Rob. As bad as I wanted him. I wanted his skill set. I wanted his mindset.
Yeah, that's what I was worried about.
I never know what could have been because the opportunity was taken from him. Do you regret backing?
Your five minutes is up, but I will make one comment. Special education is not a partisan issue. We have one of the best special education departments in the state, which is why we have great funding that we put towards that. And I hope that you will focus your attention on helping your son as the city looks to do. Thank you very much. We're at five minutes. Thank you very much. I, I would, I would like you to make disruptive criticisms, then, please.
You made it. I mean, you took away someone who understands him and kids like him. This is why it's so hard
We have professionals in the city of Bristol. Our Board of Education, our Board of Education does members do nothing to educate our children. We hire professionals. We have a great special education staff. They can have a positive impact. I would agree with you. We don't know. Rob didn't choose to do it because he wasn't
That's why we don't know.
Appreciate your coming.
Just say you made a mistake. Look at him, Jeff, come on.
You should listen to your son.
Yeah. I think you should see him and know you made a mistake.
Alex, I thank you very much for your participation. Bye-bye, Alex. Next up on our list is Peter Kelly.
Does he have his car?
Don't forget his toy. Peter, name and address for the record, please.
Kelly 44 South Town Drive. And I'm here tonight to talk about three points. First, your continued finger pointing at the Board of Education and characterizing the budget issue there as them overspending. Let's start with the facts. The CLA audit review that you commissioned in February reviewed school financial data for fiscal years 21 through 24, all during your tenure as mayor. While the expenses grew 20% from 21 to 24, the school budget has only been increased by 5%, creating an immediate budget shortfall. A responsible mayor would have ended it there. Yet you persist with trying to convince people it's the state's fault or other factors in order for them to look over there and not there. No one is debating the fact the state needs to step up and fund special education. But you are a broken record, playing only one tune instead of the whole album. It's interesting to me that since the audit review came out, you're not talking about it at all because it doesn't fit your finger pointing narrative. And the fact that you served on the BOE makes this type of purposeful misinformation even more troubling. Now, let's turn our attention to taxes. Five years ago, you stood across the street during the 2020 budget adoption complaining that the elected officials at the time were raising the mill rate by a modest percentage. You were outraged, you were red faced, and you pointed fingers. But in those three years, you have raised taxes an average of 27%. I cannot help but point to the irony that despite years of attacking Democrats, both when in office and not, the only person responsible for these outrageous increases has been you. As a matter of fact, your first year in office, you caught a windfall that resulted in no tax increase, thanks to the hard work done by the mayor who preceded you. That year, according to the city annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2023, and I quote, "There was no middle increase for this year." The October 1st, 2021 grantless growth was $165 million that generated approximately 6.2 million in additional tax revenue. This was instrumental in keeping the mill rate the same. The increase in the grant list was attributable to an 11% increase in personal property and a 26% increase in motor vehicle assessments. Funny how the only time you were responsible for the grantless growth was the only time that taxpayers seemed to benefit. In closing, that brings me to my third point, lack of leadership. Local government doesn't need to be perfect. When the people at the top can't work together, the people who suffer the most are the ones who rely on us every day. In this case, the students and families of Bristol. The city of Bristol deserves better. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Steve Kuhn, you're up next.
Steve Kuhn, 331 Main Street. Good evening. I will say one thing though. You know, one of the reasons our taxes went up is because of the 30 plus million dollars that was spent on this building by the previous administration. And you would think they have a little better sound system than this. But that doesn't sound very good in the audience, folks. But one thing I wanted to say to you, Mr. Mayor, is I have taken this lecturing eight administrations, all the way back to Mayor Leoni and Bill Stortz and Frank Nacastro, Jerry Kuchar, Art Ward, Ken Cocaine, and this administration. And I will tell you, some of them were easy to deal with, some of them not so much. I have friends that work here in City Hall. And I have friends that are city employees that work in the field. And the general consensus is this, that it was a bright day when this administration took office in 2021. These employees are willing to feel intimidated. And they don't have to whisper. They don't have to worry if there's somebody listening. It's a whole different atmosphere down here. And that's a reflection on you, Mr. Mayor, and those of you on the council, particularly Mr. Mayor. It was a pretty toxic environment down here for a long time. Something was in feedback for you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Is there anybody else in the audience that wishes to address us? If you didn't sign up? How about on Zoom? Anybody on Zoom wish to address the council? Last call. Thank you. We will move on to our next section, which is announcements. I will start on my right. Jaclyn Olson, are you ready? You're looking it up on your phone? All right. Give you a second.
Okay, the work being done by Eversource on South Street is expected to be completed by the end of September. I know that many of us are frustrated with the all the detours, myself included. The fall leaf collection begins in mid-October through November, and the filled bags are to be placed curbside left until they're picked up. Collection is available to all city residents that receive curbside trash and recycling services. The fall road resurfacing scheduled to begin on September twenty-ninth. A list of the roads to be resurfaced can be found on the Department of Public Works website. The grand opening of the playground on Federal Hill is tomorrow at four o'clock, if anybody wants to attend that. The Parks and Rec, in collaboration with Camp Pickleball of Plainville, is offering professional pickleball instructions if anyone's interested. This program begins tomorrow through October fifteenth. From five to six P M. will be for beginners and six to seven for intermediate. The cost is a hundred dollars for residents, a hundred and five for non-residents. You can check the Parks and Rec website, www.bristlerec.com for other activities being offered. There are a lot of things going on, especially for the children. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm doing something a little bit different this month for announcements. Instead of announcing some of the activities that we can find on Facebook and on some of our social media pages, I just wanted to give an update for one of our largest employers here in Bristol. I'm just going to read a couple of sections. I do have copies for everyone on the council. I was asked to share this. So it's two pages, if you could pass this down. And I will also post this on my social media page so that we can share the document in full. This is an update from Bristol Health. Bristol Health is pleased to provide the Bristol City Council with an update on our ongoing efforts to support the health and well-being of the community we proudly serve. Guided by our mission, caring today for your tomorrow, we remain committed to addressing the evolving needs of residents while strengthening the overall health of our city. This document highlights recent progress, new initiatives, and future priorities that reflect both our organizational values and the feedback we continue to receive from our patients and community partners. Just a little bit about their community engagement. Bristol Health continues to be the number one healthcare provider for our Bristol community. We continue to emphasize community engagement, providing free education and service awareness to improve health and well-being of this community. Just a few examples, monthly lectures at the Bristol Senior Center. Their Nutmeg TV Bristol Health Cares TV show episodes highlighting community resources and health education. Past guests recently have on the show have been Bristol Police Department, Chief Morello was on there. Bristol Health physicians, different work and dedication of our workforce. Bristol Health has posted a positive system-wide operating margin for fiscal, for this fiscal year. This, however, has meant that the organization needed to make and continues to make difficult and challenging decisions such as job eliminations and strategic alignments.
Thank you. And just another piece of information, because I think the sale just happened, but Ingram Manor, unfortunately Bristol Health sold, but was bought by another organization to move forward to get them more financially stable. So we wish them well. Thanks for the update. Sebastian, any announcements?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I just want to update the public. I know we had some questions from some folks on the cemetery tour at the West Cemetery, which is the first weekend in October, October, it's calendar up, I believe it's the third and the fourth. And the fifth is the rain date. Yes, and so the signups for that event is on the Bristol Historical Society website. If you go to their homepage on their menu under events, you'll find a calendar. And in the calendar, you'll find signup genius. And you'll be able to book a spot there. They go about six to ten folks per slot. There's daytime slots earlier in the evening, and then it goes into the night. A lot of really great folks run the event, a lot of volunteers from the Cemetery Commission, some great volunteers and actors and actresses who portray some of our local folks in the West Cemetery there. And the folks at the Historical Society, they do a really good job, sir, also to provide some assistance there as well. So that signup is online. I believe they're going to post on Facebook also some links to get there. They put it in the Bristol Press also, so we're getting the word out there. There's some folks already signed up now. There's plenty of slots left. But if you go to their website and follow their instructions there, you can sign up for the cemetery tours. Thank you.
Great. And if you're a history buff of Bristol, it's a must-do, and it's a very cool experience, especially nighttime, by the way.
I believe there's also a dress rehearsal that they're adding to it this year that you can get information on the Historical Society website as well, that they're going to be holding a function at the library.
Very good. I do have a couple of announcements. Some of my announcements are related to our veterans population. Many of the schools, including Southside School, are going to do a Veterans Day Assembly. So any veterans that want to get involved in any of the Veterans Day activities, please reach out to Lisa Gauske and Pat Z from Southside School. And the other announcement I wanted to do from the Veterans Council was that the American Legion Post Two has tickets that are still available for their Jeep raffle. And this raffle is, I'm going to read it here, a brand-new twenty-twenty-five Jeep Wrangler sport four-door. The ticket sales started in May. They will end right before the Veterans Day, so November tenth. You don't have to be present to be, to win the drawing, but you do need to get those tickets before November tenth. Twenty-five dollars per ticket, and you can get them at the bristolconnecticutlegion.com webpage. Then you have to look for Post Vehicle Raffle on there. So still tickets available, and for twenty-five bucks, it's a very cool Army Green Jeep Wrangler. I already bought a ticket, so I'm going to win. But you guys should get tickets. I think it's a good thing. I don't win those types of things. Don't worry. The other thing that I want to mention is something that just came about today that I'm very excited about. We just talked about the West End realignment earlier. And today, a permit through the Inland Wetlands Committee was pulled to start the demolition process for Forty West Street, or better known as Chick Miller Chevrolet. So that deserves a golf clap at least from everybody here. I can tell you that this has been a four-year journey that has gone all over the place from getting a actual loan approved for the owner of that property that then was turned down and coming back. So they still have to go through permitting process. It is over a wetlands area, but there is real progress moving forward. There is a local developer that has been contracted and paid and getting ready to move. There's an L E P that's involved, and that will really help accelerate some of that West End development. So I thought that would be a fun announcement for tonight.
Well welcomed by the people that live in that area. Have to see that go. Of course, I have the Downtown Live announcements. We kick off the fall this Saturday with nineteen sixty-four, the Tribute. So if you are a Beatles fan, you will want to be at this show. October fourth is Les Zeppelin, All Girls, All Zeppelin. And then October eleventh is the Do What Project: Echoes of the Street. So those are the three next shows as we kick off Downtown Live at Rockwell Theater. You can go to downtownlivect.com for information and tickets. Be sure to like this, to subscribe to the page, and you will start receiving all the latest information. Coming in October is Trunk or Treat and the Coffin Run. In partnership with Next Gen Car Shows, the Arts and Culture Commission is bringing back the Coffin Run. This will be our second year. The cost is only fifty dollars to win the creepiest recognition that you can ever brag to your friends about. Rules, how to construct a coffin, and the application can be found on the Bristol Parks and Recreation website. All the proceeds do benefit the Arts and Culture Commission that enable us to do other cool things around the city. The event is Saturday, October twenty-fifth, with a rain date of Sunday, the twenty-sixth. Next Gen will have treats available for the young participants. And the car exhibition is going to be amazing. That is our day. This Saturday, Boy Scout Troop fourteen twenty-five is holding a tag sale to fund future scouting trips, events, and activities. They say there are thousands of items. Nine A M. to two P M. at Gloria Day Church, thirty-five Camp Street. Please come out and support this fabulous troop and find some treasures. I'm going down Friday night with a load. Emmanuel Lutheran Church is holding their German Festival, starting Friday, September nineteenth through Saturday, September twentieth, one fifty-four Meadow Street. Some authentic German food and beer. There was a yodeling contest and a Steinholding contest. And it's a fun event for all. I did enter the Steinholding Contest two years ago, and I made two minutes. So I challenge everybody here to beat my record. I don't think I can do it. I'm going to enter this year. I challenge everybody up here to enter.
I'll try.
Yeah. I won't make two minutes probably, but. Lastly, I just want to share that the Bristol market, farmers market is still going strong. Ten Main Street, Saturday from ten A M. to one P M. We will be there through October fourth, including October fourth. Our farmers tell us they have plenty of fresh, great product and foods available throughout the month. And then we will close after that and reopen November fifteenth for a one-time special fall festival. Thank you.
Thanks, Eric.
This one's near and dear to my heart. The Kiss a Pig contest. What is Kiss a Pig? Kiss a Pig is a fun, lighthearted fundraising campaign where members, where community members, local leaders, and supporters can compete to raise money for the Bristol Boys and Girls Club of Bristol and Imagination Museum of Early Learning. Each dollar donated counts as a vote to the contestant of your choice. The contestant with the most votes earns the honor of kissing Daisy, our famous pot-bellied pig. All funds go directly to supporting and services at the Boys and Girls Club of Bristol Imagination Museum of Early Learning. Your donation helps to provide affordable, accessible, and enriching opportunities for children and families in our community. You can cast a vote by making a donation online through the contestant's fundraising page, in person at the club or the museum, through checks and cash donations marked with your chosen contestant's name. Remember, every dollar acts as one vote. More information can be found at the Bristol Boys and Girls Club of America's website. Now, if you want to see me kiss a pig, go out there and donate.
Own it up.
Thank you.
Kiss that pig.
Good luck, Eric. Mark?
This Thursday at the Bristol Clockwatch Museum, from six to nine, is the Women Wine and Watches event. This is their biggest fundraiser of the year. Tickets are fifty, fifty-five, and a hundred. Just because it says Women Wine and Watches, it is actually for all. All of the wine is going to be donated by Maple and Package Store. This coming Sunday at the Polish Club is the Mum Festival Bingo, sponsored by the Exchange Club. Doors open at ten. Ticket sales at eleven. It's a twelve-dollar admission, and games start at one o'clock. On October twenty-fifth, from five to nine, at one one two five Stafford Avenue, is the Bristol Pride Fall Festival. And one other thing to go along with Sue's Bristol Health is that the Bristol WIC Women, Infant, and Children Program, which runs from Wallingford to New Britain, all the way up to the northeast corner, they won two very big awards this year. One office won a gold customer service award, and one won a platinum service award, which is the highest award in the state for customer service for WIC.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other announcements that we might have missed? We're good. We'll move on to our consent agenda, which is items A through F. Does anybody wish to withdraw anything from the consent agenda? No, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent.
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. We move on to number six, which is our reports and committee reports. We have two real estate items, so Sue, I'll turn those over to you. Six A.
Okay, well, first I'll start by making a motion to waive the reading of our policy.
So move. Second.
We got a motion. You made the motion. Give Eric the second.
Oh, second, I'm sorry.
Perfect, that's fine. All those in favor? Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
And now the second motion is, I make a motion, I hereby move that the city of Bristol adopt the attached procedures on the disposition or sale of city-owned properties, which shall guide the Real Estate Committee in recommending to the city council the most advantageous method to dispose or sell any city-owned real property. I further move that this matter be referred to Corporation Council to effectuate this new policy.
Second.
Great. Now, do you want to add some overview on the changes?
So just a quick summary, we, myself, Eric Rosengren, and Mark Dickow, we comprise the Real Estate Committee at this time. And there's a lot of times where city-owned parcels come before us, and we have to make a decision on how to dispose of them or how to put them up for sale. And we have two different processes, an R F P, a request for proposals, and we have the other option, which is putting it in the hands of our real estate broker and putting it out for sale on the M L S and open to everyone. We spent a lot of time coming up with this policy, and especially in this market, we just wanted the availability, like a guideline, to help direct the Real Estate Committee to decide which avenue was most advantageous to the city, ultimately to our taxpayers. I think my next motion will kind of discuss an R F P. And I have another motion that I'll be bringing up under new business, where we just put a property out in a real estate broker's hands. So we are kind of, you know, deciding what the best fit is and to benefit the city.
This policy will help us guide and direct us on that.
Sure, I think it keeps things more consistent. You know, so we do things, we've got good guidelines, so if it's one way, we lean more one way than the other. I think it's a good policy.
Great. Anything to add, Mark? Anybody else have any questions or comments? All those in favor? Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Six B.
Okay. I hereby move that the city council direct the purchasing agent to issue an R F P, Request for Proposals, placing public notices and to notify abutting property owners of the city's intention to sell city-owned property known as Lot four twenty dash one A, four twenty dash one Burlington Avenue. The asking price to be determined by the tax assessor working with the purchasing agent.
Second.
Great. And this is by the new policy, one that's open to the market for people, correct?
Nope. This is going to go through an R F P process because it is a very unique piece of property. It is landline.
Oh, that's right.
It is not really anything that anyone other than abutting property owners would even be interested in.
So it doesn't have that same marketability. Makes sense. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. And I'll ask you, you have a new business item, because real estate met before this. Do we want to take it up here or wait for new business?
It's up to you, Mayor.
What do you think, Corp Counsel? New business, technically? Okay, let's take it up now. Go ahead. Stay with the real estate theme.
Okay, I hereby move that the city council accept the offer from Mayor Juszczyk and Amelia. Mark?
I don't have it in front of me.
Breno Stasys. I apologize if I have butchered the name. Or there are signs for the purchase of city-owned property known as eighty-six Divinity Street, Assessor's Map twenty-eight, Lot eleven, for the sales price of forty-six thousand dollars. I further move that the mayor or acting mayor be authorized to sign any documents necessary to effectuate this motion and that this matter be referred to the Corporation Council.
Second.
Great. Sebastian got the second. This came before us already. This is the one that went to real estate, which confused me earlier, but offers came in.
Yes, and we did have, without disclosing too much information, we did have multiple offers. Our real estate broker did a phenomenal job. We had a special real estate committee meeting earlier this evening where we went through, and we chose an offer that was a very good, strong offer for the city of Bristol. a very good, strong offer for the city of Bristol.
Sounds like it. Any other comments by the real estate committee? Any questions from those that are not on real estate? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Right, for knocking off all those city properties. I like to put them in people's hands so that they can increase the tax base. Great, um, I'm gonna go to, we don't have any other actual committee uh assignment things to come out, so we'll do committee reports. Jackie, we'll stay on the right. Great. Do you have any other committee reports, Sue?
Not this month.
Sebastian?
No reports.
I don't think I have any either.
Thank you, through the chair. Just a quick update on Arts and Culture Commission. We're still working on our cultural district map, which will highlight locations that feature arts and culture, and we'll be opening it, opening it up to local businesses in the district to get on the map, similar to one of these maps you might pick up if you go to Boston or Mystic or whichever. And this will help offset the cost of production. This will be a great tool in helping those that visit the city to maneuver their way around to find some of the features we offer, as well as our restaurants or other points of interest. Um, we're getting ready to um do a reveal of our latest sculpture, which will be over by Stock's Playground. So we will, you know, I don't want to re- um release too much information, but I'll just say it's similar to the Locks of Love Bridges that you read about across the country. So more to follow on that. Um, I mentioned earlier that people should subscribe to downtownlivect.com because we're going to be offering a membership for Rockwell Theater patrons. And this small membership fee will give you first opportunity to buy tickets, to be part of the club, get the best seats and get, you know, your best seats possible. And that's gonna be launched later on this season. Um, I want to give an update on the animal control. I'm not gonna speak too much on it because we do have it as a motion earlier, but we did select the architect. So I will save other comments for then. Um, and lastly, on the fire commission, uh interviews are underway to fill what vacancies we have. Um, but during the August meeting, uh we did recognize our Bristol Fire Department's peer support team, along with Molly, who is our dedicated peer support dog, who gave necessary care and compassion to the members of the Plainville Fire Department during the tragic loss of firefighter Ray Morrow. So a kudos to those members of our department for being there for others. Thank you.
Thanks, Cheryl.
I just have one. Um, Bristol Early Childhood Collaborative, the Bristol Early Childhood Collaborative partnered with the Bristol Fire Department to bring two lucky children to their first day of kindergarten. Congratulations to Gianna Palma, going to Green Hills, and Iad Maragani going to Hubble. If parents are looking for, for an affordable, high-quality preschool experience for their child, please reach out to our state-funded sites. Full, full-day pre-K is available at Bristol Child Development Center, Imagination, and Head Start. That's it.
Thank you, Eric. And that was very fun, bringing those kids to school. Thank you to Donna, who's in the audience for spearheading that and running that every year. And I don't see Chief Hart here, but uh the fire department did a great job with it. Mark?
Nothing. I have one that I did want to mention, uh just from ECD, a committee report. Uh, something that's out there already, but just wanted to make sure everybody was paying attention because I think it's another important step forward in a lot of this redevelopment. We've talked about a lot of that tonight. The ECD Board has put together an RFP that's not quite done yet, but very close, and hopefully in October will go out for actual bid on the last acre and a half of property that is known as the center square property, which started out uh over seventeen acres. It's just south of Wheeler Health. And intertwined in that uh plan for RFP is a new pocket park that got a little bit smaller and fit in so that a future developer will have nearly an acre and a half of land to go ahead and develop. That RFP, um and what was presented at the ECD meeting is an RFP that's gonna look for a dense, uh living commercial space, uh be pretty open to developers, uh pre-developers, you know, pre-RFP, we have developers already reaching out to us, so we look forward to getting that out soon. And I will be very happy on the day we can say that we don't own any property in that center mall area. So, uh just thought I would report that as well. Any other committee reports? We'll keep moving. Old business. Anybody have any old business? Anybody have any new business? We took care of yours, Sue, so I don't think there was any other new business looking in my notes. Or council, there's none. Erica will do resignations.
We have two resignations from the former School Readiness, current Bristol Early Childhood Collaborative. That is Alyssa McGee and Wendy McGrath. And we have Keith Elder, who was a two-nine from the Historic District Commission.
I make a motion to accept the resignations, put them on file, and have a letter sent to the participants, thanking them for their service.
Second.
Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Alright, so we have some new appointments. Uh first for the Bristol Early Childhood Collaborative, and I think this will pull that team together completely now. Um, we have three appointments. I think we can take these all together. So we're gonna appoint. I put my glasses on so I get the last name right. Claire Strelaschi, I think it is. Strelaki Lasi? Strelaki. Um, she's from the Bristol Public Library. Uh, we're gonna also appoint Michelle Fanguilo, who's part of our Early Start Connecticut Provider at Imagination, and Melissa Mendez, who's our healthcare provider. She works for Wheeler Health. So I need a motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Uh this is just an announcement. Uh I believe we don't have to vote on this. Is Central, or do we have to vote on this attorney? I don't think so. Announcement. Central High School Building Committee. Um, our council representation will be Cheryl Tebow. Um, we just finished the Green Hills one. And I, that wasn't her, eight-point-three million. Uh, this one, try to keep it under that, but that's about what it costs, actually. And then John Ladavico will be our Board of Finance representative for that building committee. Um, Historic Commission is the next one. Uh, as you heard, Keith Elder was uh two-nine. I had a conversation with him. The Historic District Commission doesn't meet on a regular basis. Um, they have different things that come up. Uh, he's a very busy individual, and I think his was that he didn't make um sixty percent of the meetings. So it wasn't that he wasn't interested in, didn't, just busy guy. He did ask to get reappointed, so I'm gonna consider that reappointment tonight. So I'm hopeful that um we can have a motion to appoint Keith Elder.
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. On inland wetlands, we have a reappointment of Fay Duquette. Uh, that will expire on nine-twenty-eight.
So move.
Approval.
Second.
Sebastian and Eric is what I got. Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Alright, uh on persons with disabilities, we have uh to replace Andrew Collins. So we're gonna appoint Deborah Reed, and that term will expire on six-twenty-six. And by the way, it's a very interesting appointment. Uh, so Deborah is blind, um and can't see at all, has been attending these meetings quite regularly. And the Disabilities Commission is really very well-balanced with an awful lot of uh great individuals on there. So I thank Dan Licari for making that happen, and we'll continue to make sure that she's accessible at those meetings. So I met her the other day. So have a motion to approve Deborah.
So move.
Approval.
I'm giving that one to Jackie, who's been a half a second late all day. The second comes from Sebastian. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Uh, we are looking for somebody on the retirement board, but didn't come through today. And uh so next is Youth Commission. Maybe our youngest uh participant ever on any uh boards and commissions. And he's in the audience with us tonight. So RJ Motel uh will be our under-twenty-one representative, and he will have a term that expires on three-twenty-eight, and I'll still be well under that twenty-one-year-old category.
So move.
Well, we had a fight for this one. I'm gonna give it to Eric, though, because he's on.
I'm on the commission.
Okay, okay.
Second.
Second by me.
There you go. Wait, we didn't vote yet. We didn't vote yet. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Now we.
If you want to say hello to us, you're welcome to come up and say hello. I saw you stood up. We, we want to hear. And you could tell people how old you are if you want. I didn't divulge that yet.
Just make sure the green light is on.
It is. Hi.
Hi.
RJ Motel. I'm thirteen years old, and I'm ready to be on the Youth Commission.
There he is. And he's been attending meetings all along, right, and RJ, and has been involved, so.
Where do you go to school?
I'm homeschooled, actually. But um I think it was your sister used to be my gym teacher.
Lisa Gauska, best gym teacher and a phys ed teacher in the city. Sorry.
At the next meeting, RJ.
She speaks highly of you as well. Alright, um we have two more. Oh, these are just announcements, I think, too. So um I don't think we had an update here, but I just wanted to make sure that our capital improvement uh committee is made up of myself, Sebastian, Sue Tyler, Cheryl Tebow, John Smith, Marie O'Brien, Dave Mikowski, Tom Hislop, and Diane Waldron. And I think the reason I I announced this is Dave Mikowski has come back on to the Capital Improvement uh Committee because of a retirement and a change on the Board of Finance. Um, and then just another announcement. We've announced this one before, but Northeast Middle School, and we want to make sure we just put it on the record, is uh as a mayor on the city council representative, John Smith, Eric Carlson, John Freemuth, David Hartley, Kelly Roberts, Stan Sonstrom, Frank Stosky, and John Ladavico. And that meets pretty much right before this meeting, so um I will give more updates on that next time. Erica or Ed, did I miss any? I think I'm good. Very good. Alright, we will move on to um the Assessor's Office. Uh, and Tom is here, so I'll ask him to just come up and introduce these uh one by one. I believe we have uh somebody in the audience that would probably address us on the first one. So we'll take up uh eleven A, which is a request from Tolman Spring Company at ninety-one Enterprise Drive to to grant a personal property exemption, excuse me, for the twenty-twenty-four tax year.
Yeah, so Tolman Spring is, uh good evening, everybody, is um a great business in the city of Bristol. They've filed their personal property declarations annually. There was a hiccup this past year um where things were getting reorganized with the change in leadership. And um there is a provision in the statutes that um can be availed by you, twelve-dash-ninety-four E, which allows them the opportunity to, or you, to accept the declaration and for us to process that declaration without assessing any penalties or interest.
Great. And Matt is here, I believe, right? Did I, there he is over there. I don't know if you want to address us. You're more than welcome to, but um or you can just come up for questions. He's just. Great. Any comments or questions here? Alright, so we, we need a motion to to move this forward. Go ahead and read it.
I move that the city council pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, Section twelve-dash-nine-four E, grant a personal property exemption to Tolman Spring for assessment year twenty-twenty-four for property as listed under account number zero-two-zero-zero-four-seven, unique ID P zero-two-six-six-two-seven-two, based upon Tolman Spring's request to file its M-sixty-five exemption past the statutory deadline, and to further direct the city assessor and city tax collector to make any adjustments to their list which result from the granting of this exemption, including waiving penalties for late filing.
Second.
We have a second. Great. And just to make sure it's clear for everybody, this is a personal property tax exemption, M-sixty-five on equipment that's come in, that's helped them be successful. It would be a very big hit to the company and a difficult thing for them to actually recover from. So um any questions or comments from the council?
Chair?
Yes.
Is, is this a one-time exemption?
Yes, this is a one-time exemption on this year, uh but moving forward, they will have to file again, correct? So.
Yes, it's an annual filing, and it is mandatory with a law date of November first each year.
They just missed the filing deadline this year, and that's why we're here tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Good question. Any other clarification or questions for anybody? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is anybody opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Go ahead and uh keep bringing Tolman Springs forward. Uh, I see you breathing a s- a big sigh of relief, but uh we're happy to help you out and keep businesses in business here in Bristol. Alright, uh if you can do B for us, Tom, that'll be great.
Sure. Um nineteen-seventy Perkins Street um was a transfer this past April. Um, looked at everything in our database systems. We have two software providers, Vision Appraisal and the Camiside, and Quality Data Services on the admin side. The admin side communicates to the tax collector. Everything in the background um program on Vision uh worked perfectly. It downloaded the file into an Excel spreadsheet, which I confirmed with the collector's office, but the admin system didn't communicate um the transfer. So we technically had the wrong taxpayer as of July first for this particular property. Um, and it should have been Mark Stewart Konofsky. So um we're asking the waiver of interest on this, and there was a statement attached by the tax collector. It amounts to about twenty-nine dollars and thirteen cents.
Through the chair, I make a motion to consider the interest waiver provision pursuant to Section twelve-dash-one-four-five for Mark Stewart Konofsky, seven nineteen-seventy Perkins Street, twenty-twenty-four Grand List Real Estate Tax Bill.
Second.
Great. This one's pretty straightforward and not nearly as significant, which is good. All those in fa- all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. And we have one more. Wait, Tom?
Yes, um, so this is for Mark and Lydia Maraglino. This is an assessment staff error. Um, when the transfer came through, it was uh the main property on Tough Street, also an adjacent lot at um number three-seventy-seven. Um, this interest waiver is about twenty-three dollars.
Through the chair, I make a motion to consider the interest waiver provision pursuant to Section twelve-dash-one-four-five for Mark and Lydia Maraglino, Lot three-seventy-seven Tough Street, twenty-twenty-three, and twenty-twenty-four Grand List Real Estate Tax Bills.
Second.
Comments or questions on this one?
Through the chairs. So for future references, there, there's notice made, there's communication, so that something like that doesn't occur again for that same property.
Um, there, there are a lot of volume when it comes to reading instruments. Um, we do have some safeguards in place, but um it, it is pretty much just a human error event that the actual transfer, if I understand your question correctly.
And I was gonna save this till after we're done, but maybe let's add it here. We're gonna vote on this in a second, is we have twenty-seven thousand plus properties. Uh, how many vehicles, by the way? I didn't know this. We're fifty-something thousand.
Fifty. It was about seventy thousand tax bills annually.
Yeah.
That we're managing, so.
So we're never gonna get this perfect. It's never gonna be exact, and I think we have to realize that we make corrections when we need to make corrections that are reasonable. And um, you know, this is not on the backs of the taxpayers on this stuff. This is, you know, we're gonna make some mistakes. So these are very insignificant changes here for these as well. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Tom. Appreciate it. Alright, we move on to twelve, which is our contracts. So I'll entertain a motion to award contract two P two-five-dash-zero-five-six architectural engineering services relative to renovation of a commercial building towards the use of a municipal animal control facility to design learned incorporation in the amount of four-hundred-sixty-thousand-eight-hundred-eighty dollars, and to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate said contract.
Move approval.
Second.
Great. Cheryl, you wanted to add to this, I'm sure?
Yes, um, we had gone out to bid again after the uh uh change. Uh, we, we had a previous architect that was hired that really focused on pre-state changes in law and so forth. So after we acquired the Thirty Cross Street, we found it necessary to go back out. Um, the previous architect did bid, uh along with a couple other firms. The uh team spent significant time interviewing. We had selected three to interview out of all the applicants. Um, we all, it was pretty unanimous that we would, we felt that design learned, had the best experience. This is all they do is animal control, hospitals, facilities, shelters, and so forth. And it was very clear that their expertise um in understanding uh what we needed. Um, they also have been in projects where they've had to value engineer before. So we felt that they were the best choice for us um to come out and work on our project with us. They uh do everything from design management to conception to post-construction. We've hired them basically for the architectural services. So um I can't urge the council enough to move. So, um, I can't urge the council enough to move ahead and vote yes on this choice.
Great. Other questions or comments from anybody?
Chair?
Yep.
Was the prior, uh, design team, were they actually hired?
They did, and they did complete some services which they were compensated for, but we didn't take it to the next level.
Okay.
Because, you know, the whole project scope had changed.
All right. Thank you.
And so then just to mention as well, we handed this off to Nancy, who's in the audience. And this is one of her first major, uh, RFPs and, and, um, design firm choices as we come through, so. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Uh, we, we talked about this in our, uh, previous meeting to add, to allocate the money towards this as well. So I wanted to entertain a motion to award contract two C two-six-zero-zero-one, replacement of diving boards and starting blocks for the indoor pool to Connecticut Custom Aquatics LLC in the amount of a hundred-seventeen thousand, fifty-seven dollars and eighty cents, and to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to effect said contract.
Move approval. Second.
Comments or questions on this one?
Yeah, remember, yeah. I remember, uh, a few years ago, um, they were repairing these, the starting blocks. They were loose and they kept coming loose. So they've tried. I think they've done everything they can to, to repair. So I think, you know, it'd be a good idea to replace.
Yep. No, it is time, uh, just for more, and this could have been a parks update perhaps too. But, um, there, the, uh, participants in the programs are looking to raise money as well to fix all of the timing pads and the scoreboard, because we've had updates on scoreboards in all of the schools. That was donated by outside, um, people and, um, they're working on that too. So the Parks and Rec Board is looking through the Friends of Parks to, uh, help them on that endeavor. And, uh, we'll continue to work on that. We haven't signed that contract yet, but, um, that we're going to have them try to bring everything up to snuff. And I don't think this has ever been replaced since it was built as well either. It's all old.
Through the chair, and I, I know this has nothing to really do with the motion, but I would suggest that, um, possibly it goes back to parks that when swim teams aren't using the starting blocks, it's very easy to buy covers that tie them off so that, you know, kids or other people can't use them and climb on them during non-competitive time. And it will preserve, you know, them to last a lot longer. I know some facilities do that. So just a suggestion to pass on.
Okay. And I'll bring that back. Thank you. And I guess it is related. We'll save it. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. All right. Last contract to, uh, I'll entertain a motion to award contract two C two-five-zero-nine-three, heaters at Public Works Garage to Perfect Temp and Corp in the amount of a hundred-thirty-nine thousand, eight-hundred-fifty-three dollars, and to authorize the mayor and acting mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to effect said contract.
All moved. Second.
Great. Uh, any questions or comments on this one?
Let's get it done before winter.
About time.
Yeah, this one's been a long road and, uh, I, I don't know if Ray, will it be done before the winter? It will. Very good. Oh, and Nancy says yes, it will be. Thirty days. Very good. All right. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. I don't think we have any other matter to come before us.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.